So I think we'll start.
We have, if you have the agenda, we have three requests for adjournment.
Case number 2779, Coles Associates. Case number 2783, James Branca. And case number 2784, Gerald Rosengarden.
And will we adjourn these cases?
You have a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have one case for decision. That's case number 2766, Philip and Nina Edwards, 395 First Neck Lane.
I move to accept this decision as proposed.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want a copy?
Yeah, could I, is it possible, or am I stretching my law?
No, I don't have.
Depends on whether they brought the...
I have one.
There's a seventeen-page decision which I sent you last week.
We have the conditions, too.
And then there's a page eighteen with Chick's conditions.
Yeah.
If you have all that, you can give them a copy. If you have an extra copy...
This is the only one I have.
Okay.
I can get it tomorrow, then.
Yep.
This one? What was that?
That's the conditions.
Yeah, the conditions.
You also have the other thing, the seventeen?
No, no, I just have the conditions.
Special conditions you want?
Yeah.
I got the...
Yeah, I have those, too.
Oh, thanks.
There's the decision, seventeen pages.
No, it's just the...
Here's the special conditions.
Thanks, I'll give it right back to you.
I didn't bring any extras, because I thought there would be extras in the packet, but I guess they're not.
No. I'm surprised they didn't put them in there, because...
All right, fine.
On the pending cases, case number 2746, 550 and 554 Hill Street, L. C.
There's nothing to do on that. We're waiting to hear from the planning board on the Secra coordination. So we'll just have to adjourn that until Secra is in order.
We do have some things in the packet that we got this evening from the attorney.
I move to adjourn this case for planning board review, etc.
My second.
Was the referral sent out, that you know Chick sent that out?
I don't know whether Chick sent it out or not. He's coming, but he's tied up in traffic.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Case number 2777, 45 Moses Lane, LLC, 45... I don't know what that means. Moses Lane.
That's an applicant, Gilbert G. Flanagan, 21 South Main Street, Southampton. This is a continuing application, as you know, and at the last meeting, you requested us to look into a couple of additional things, which we did, including that being an analysis of the character of the neighborhood, setbacks of existing houses in the immediate vicinity of 45 Moses Lane, and also to see whether or not we could shift things further to the east, move the house close to the street, and thereby move the proposed guest house further from the rear property line. So we took those comments seriously, and I did submit for the work session, which I hope you had a letter dated July 16th, which did two things. Number one, I calculated from village records, front yard setbacks of houses on a number of the lots immediately adjacent to 45 Moses Lane, has a table, and also some of the houses on the opposite side of Moses Lane, so you should have a table that looks like this.
Yes.
The other thing I did was to analyze, and I think you'd also asked me to look at the effect of the construction on the three adjoining properties, so what I did was, I scaled out on the site plan that's been submitted, two scenarios. One, where we applied for the proposed improvements, and the second showing a twenty-foot easterly shift of the house and the guest house, the proposed guest house and the swimming pool. So that also should be in your package, and you could see what that means. Now, at the time I did that, I didn't have the site plan amended to show the twenty-foot shift, but I did have the architect do that, and it was only today, I believe, that I submitted that, so you may not have had a chance to look at it. But I did submit the site plan showing what things would look like if everything was moved twenty feet further east. And just so you know, the result of that would be that the house would then have a setback at its base of eighty feet, ten inches. Hello would have a covered porch, which would have a setback of seventy-four feet, five inches. And if you look at this table, you'll note that that's consistent with four of the houses in the immediate vicinity of the subject property. So we're getting more into conformity, or into consistency, with what the adjoining neighbors have a setback. For example, 27 Moses Lane, the house is setback ninety-one point nine feet. 75 Moses Lane has a setback of eighty-one point eight feet, and 91 Moses Lane has a setback of two-hundred-and-fifty feet. So we're either equivalent to, or with a lesser setback than those, and there are a couple of other ones that are in the forty-foot range, including the subject premises, which currently is setback about forty-two feet from the street. So certainly, we're, by shifting it further to the east by twenty feet, we are more consistent with some of the other houses in the immediate neighborhood. So you should have that. That accompanied my letter of July 16th, in which I spelled all of that out. As I say, you do now have a site plan. Actually, it's two site plans. The one on the right-hand side shows what it would be like if it were built. The one on the left shows the proposed improvement superimposed on what is there now. For example, the warehouse and the existing house, so you can get a comparison. And I think it bears repeating on this, I know there was some concern, although some comments made by the neighbors that the warehouse used there hasn't been that dramatic an activity, but that's not to say that the next user who came in and operated that warehouse couldn't have another Canada Dry, or White Rock, or whatever it was, or another bottled water, processing or bottling plant, and that could be quite an active activity. So just because it isn't active now doesn't mean it couldn't be, you know, six weeks from now, a month from now, or even a year from now. And we would be giving that, the right to that, up forever in exchange for a guest house slash pool house, which of course is a residential use in a residential district as opposed to a commercial operation, which it currently has the right to utilize. Now, you may remember at the last meeting, I submitted an affidavit from Ed Lowe, who was the owner, indicating that that business was actively used up until April of last year, and has not been actively abandoned, so that could crank up any time within the next eighteen months to two years without any zoning issues as far as the village is concerned. So I think that's about it. If you have any questions, I think we tried to answer what you wanted. We tried to give you the information you were looking for, and we think we've been sensitive to those questions. I might also point out that if we shift things twenty feet further to the east, the rear yard setback of that proposed guest house slash pool house would be at thirty-five feet, which is the rear yard setback for the biggest zone that you have in the village, namely the R-120. So I think, I think we've attempted to address what your issues were. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
I have a question, I think it's of the board more than you, sir. I wonder about the wisdom of calling it a pool house in any case. Did you discuss this, maybe?
Well, it's, it's...
In other...
I've asked for it, and part of it functions as a pool house, but it's a guest house.
Why don't we just call it a guest house? Because once you put the slash pool house...
We can.
Will somebody come down the road and say, hey, that pool house, slash pool house, has living quarters in it, and maybe we...
It is a guest, the reason I mentioned, you asked, I think about, there were bathroom facilities. There is a bathroom that directly faces the pool, so part of it will function as a pool house, but it's a guest house.
But it's a guest house with a patio to the pool, or whatever you want to say.
You're absolutely right.
I don't like the term, because somebody might come along and say, hey, pool house then, I guess, can be...
Well, we did, when we applied for it, we asked for a guest house. I'm just, I mentioned it only to show that...
Yeah.
It's configured the way it is, is that part of it will act as a pool house, but it's a guest house. No question about it. I'm with you on that.
I think it should be turned that way.
Right. Totally willing to do that.
So far as the other lots and their setbacks, I mean, two-hundred-and-fifty is certainly an aberration.
Yep.
I'm sure the people that own that would be very happy if it wasn't two-hundred-and-fifty, because it restricts what they can do with their property.
Yep, yep, right.
I think the forties are more in line with what goes on in that street, although there is one from 91.
And it's 91, the 81, and 78. And they're right, they're right, not adjacent to it, but within a lot of two of it.
As you can see, there's a house down the street that's under construction, toward the north, on the same side of the street, same side of Moses Lane. There had been a house there set way back.
Right.
And they're building a house there now, and a very narrow lot. There are some narrow lots on that street.
Right.
That are very deep. And quite a few years ago, some of those houses were built way in the back of the lots.
I remember that.
Which is, that's the 250.
All right, as I say, we tried to, we think it fits at least with fifty percent, and by the way, we don't need any setback relief for anything we're doing, and it's important to remember that. We don't need any setback. In fact, we exceed all of the setbacks for this particular zoning district, so we're conforming. The only thing we're asking for is permission to take the clearly non-conforming warehouse use and replace it with a much smaller guest house. That's all.
And the size of the guest house is what?
On the map, I think it's specified, I can tell you. Twelve-hundred-and-twenty-two square feet.
It's one-story?
One-story, sixteen feet in height, no height variance, no pyramid law, no basement.
And you could have, as a matter of right, something of what size?
Five-twenty.
Right.
Given the size. But again, remember, I forgot what the size of the warehouse is, but that's more than, I think it's more than double the size of the building that we're proposing. And that's grossly non-conforming, obviously, not only in terms of its use, but in terms of its setbacks. So we're getting rid of all of that, and we think, we think it should be an improvement.
Parking, I mean, I just saw all those car cars in the front. That's okay now, right? I mean, he...
Two right here, but I'm not...
I made sure that the parking, by the way, that all conforms with the required setbacks, and obviously has to be...
Now, you can have that much front yard parking now?
Yeah. As long as you're within ten feet of the lot lines, and it's screened for the satisfaction of the billing department, you absolutely can. Code was changed a couple of years ago.
You're showing eight spaces, right? Two in the garage, and two in front of the garage, and four in the front yard.
Right. I mean, that's, that may be more than we need, but we can, it's all, it's all legal.
Mm-hmm.
It's all conforming.
The house has how many bedrooms?
Well, that, I don't, I don't know that I have a floor plan for that.
Three or four.
Yeah, so we could probably eliminate some of that, depending on how many bedrooms.
You're way under your lot coverage here.
Way under the lot. When we originally submitted, we're way under the lot coverage.
It's a big lot.
It's a big lot, we're way under the lot coverage, we're way under the GFA. We looked at that the first time we came. They say we don't need any variances at all, except for changing the one used to what we consider to be less non-conforming.
I think the concern of the neighbors, at least, just one of their concerns, at some point, this will be turned into like a rental unit.
Well, again, that's, that would be a violation of CO. I know in the past, when guest houses have been addressed, there's a specific note on the CO, you sometimes require covenants and restrictions to be filed.
That they cannot be rented.
That it cannot be rented, that it's, most time when there's a guest house, that goes on the CO. If you want covenants and restrictions, we'll do that, and if there's a violation, then the village can enforce it.
Does it have heat? Does it have heat?
It would have heat, if it's a guest house, yeah, it would have heat.
I know, but you know what? There was a garage where somebody put an apartment in. You know, it's, you can't stop it.
But no, we're saying that it's like a guest house.
Well, I know that, but it's...
It's not a pool house.
Yeah, I know, it's not, but that's what when they call it a guest house slash pool house.
I'm fine calling it a guest house. The only reason I mentioned the pool house is that it will also act as a, and it would obviate the need for a separate, separate building as a pool house, which we can put in...
Right.
Yeah, we could theoretically put in five-hundred-and-twenty square feet of pool house. We don't need to do it if we do this.
Didn't we have a case last year or two where the guy put up, said you could put a fireplace in a pool house?
That was a village trustee's interpretation. I know, because I was involved with that. And I remember, because it happened when I was on my honeymoon in 1988. That's true.
Couple of years ago.
A couple of years ago.
And the argument was, well, if you have a fireplace in there, well, who's to say what fuel you use?
That's true. That was the trustees, actually.
Oh, this was a couple...
Remember that? That's...
I don't really remember, of course, but...
But the other thing, by the way, the warehouse and the office in the warehouse, that had heat, so it's not as if we're adding a heated thing that we didn't have heating before.
Rick, do you have anything?
No questions?
Yes, sir. Anyone out in the audience would like to be heard to this application? Well, I heard some last one, but I suppose we have some this one. Hold up a decision.
We're probably yes.
Hold up a decision.
If you don't have any more questions, we might, we'll hold up a decision.
I have no more questions. Anybody else?
No.
No. If you have a motion to hold up a decision, you hold up a decision.
Some moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Case is done for new cases, the first one being 2781, Barbara Lowey, 75, First Neck
Good evening, board members. Kevin McGowan of Essex Hathren Angel, and the applicants, Barbara and John Lowey. I just submitted the affidavits of mailing and posting. The subject property is located on the west side of First Neck Lane, within an R-120 zoning district, has a lot area of eighty-seven thousand, thirty-six square feet, is approved with a single family home, with two carports located along the south side of the home. One carport is located on the southeast corner, and the other carport is located on the southwest corner. This application seeks to replace the existing carport at the southwest corner with the attached, with an attached garage to the home. The garage will be slightly larger than the carport, and setback twenty-seven feet from the south side lot line. Because the village code requires a thirty-foot side yard setback, what we're requesting is what we believe is a very minor setback, or minor setback variance, to allow the garage to encroach by three feet. The footprint of the proposed garage is approximately twenty feet by twenty-four feet, total of four-hundred-and-eighty square feet, but only, only the front three feet will be encroaching into the setback area, so it's, we're talking about less than seventy-five square feet of the garage. We provided photographs of the existing home with the carports as they are, along with a rendering of what the proposed garage would look like for your reference. We believe that this application offers no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, and would not create any detriment to nearby properties. The location of the proposed garage is currently, as I said, occupied by the existing carport, and the variance would simply allow the owner to provide an enclosed garage space rather than the open, open-air carport. Along the south side of the home, where the garage will be located, the neighboring property to the south is shielded by a hedge that runs along the south side lot line, and is further separated from the subject property by a private driveway that runs, runs along the south side lot line to the adjacent property to the rear of the site. The garage will also be setback further from the side lot line than the other carport on the site, which, as you can see, in setback, is located less than twelve feet from the side lot line. The height of the proposed garage will be approximately four feet, fourteen feet, ten inches, in line with what the existing carport is. There won't be any change in the height, and it'll be completely conforming in that As I said, the footprint of the proposed garage is twenty-four feet wide by twenty feet deep. That twenty-foot depth is the minimum necessary to fit, to adequately fit vehicles within the garage. Therefore, it can't be cut back any further without it being a hindrance to actually parking in the garage. And also, the proposed garage can't be located elsewhere on the property due to the layout, the landscaping, the existing driveway, the location of the pool, in the northwest portion of the site, and as you can see in some of the photographs, this is already, the driveway is already laid out, it's already functioning into the carport, where if you moved it to a different portion of the home, you'd be dealing with existing windows, porches, things like that. There's no functional change to the site. It's a, it's a two, it's a carport that fits two cars, it'll be a garage for two cars, and as you can see from the rendering, the garage has been designed to match the aesthetic of the home itself, and will actually, the finished product will actually provide a space within the garage to store cars and any other stored material that might otherwise be considered an eyesore, will be within this finished aesthetically pleasing space. As I said, we believe the proposed variance to essentially be de minimis, but if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
The driveway to the proposed garage is pervious, imperious, pervious?
It's gravel, pervious. I haven't researched the matter, but I believe it's pervious.
Okay.
There isn't even a scale on the drawing of the...
On the proposed rendering?
Was it done professionally?
It was done by the architect, but I can have, we can have him submit something.
John Rose?
What's that?
No, John Rose did some work on this house originally.
Sandy Peabody provided us with the photograph. It's, it's really just to give you an idea of what it would look like. It's not supposed to be perfect to scale.
How deep is the garage?
I'm sorry?
How deep is the garage?
Twenty feet deep.
Well, I would like to see if that is dedicated to being pervious.
Okay, I'll look into that matter and consider...
Because if it were not, it could, you know, leak down into the private road and whatnot.
Okay.
Or back into the garage, who knows? Like mine.
It looks like, part of the difficulty is that the house is set so far to the south on a large piece of property, right? If the house was further to the north when it was first built, there wouldn't be any...
Correct, exactly.
Is that going to be a usable deck on that roof, or is that just decoration?
It's not. I actually asked the architect the same question. It's an ornamental railing that's proposed, might not be exactly what's ultimately up there, but it's not for any congregating space, any deck or porch.
You hear anything?
No, it looks simple.
No. Jerry?
No.
Ken?
Just one question, which is a legal question that is probably going to require them to do some homework. It might not affect the end result, but the application has been filed, and on the assumption that the southerly line is a side yard line. And the application refers to the, calls it a private driveway to the south. The survey doesn't agree with that description. The survey says it's a private road.
Right.
If it is a private road, then this is a corner lot with two front yard requirements.
Whether it's a non-access private road?
Well, even if, whether it is or isn't, you know, for a main, you know, for an accessory building, there's automatic relief for a non-access private road, but for a principal building in the house, there is no automatic relief, so...
I understand, I actually...
If it is a private road, then you need a front yard variance to twenty-seven feet rather than a side yard variance. So rather than being a three-foot variance, it's a much larger variance. So we, I mean, we need to know what, whether we're granting a front yard variance or a side yard variance.
Understood. I actually proposed that exact question to Ten Soho and the building department, because at first blush, I thought it might be a non-access private road. Despite what is shown on the survey, I was told by the building department, they confirmed that this flag portion of the tailor property, which is at the rear, is merely a private right-of-way, and does not qualify as a non-access private road under section 116-11E. Building department stated that they interpret the non-access private road as a private road providing access to multiple lots, because this private driveway to the south of the subject site only provides access to the tailor property. It doesn't, according to the billing department, does not qualify as a non-access private road, but instead is merely a private right-of-way or driveway. And therefore, he said it would be a side...
That might be, I'm not saying that's not the case, but we don't have any legal documentation showing, showing what it is, and the surveyor has concluded that it's a private road. Now, it could be a mistake by the surveyor. It's not a simple question.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it may go back to, well, it certainly depends on whether that right-of-way serves one parcel or more than one parcel, but I don't know that. I don't know if the building department knows it. So you're, you're going to have to do some homework.
Okay. Then determine the def...
I don't know how it was created.
If we take the building department's interpretation and...
If it's just a flagpole lot, then the answer is simple. You know, it's not, it's not a private road.
Mm-hmm.
It's not even a right-of-way. It's part of a flagpole lot.
Right, yeah.
But if, if that, so I don't know when this other lot, if he's not going to listen to me, I'm not going to be able to...
Sorry, I'm sorry.
No point in my talking.
I'm sorry.
So it, it can be an involved legal question as to what it is, and I don't know the answer without any facts. I don't know when, when that tailor parcel was created, whether it was created by some type of subdivision approval from years ago that showed a private road serving the tailor parcel and some other property down. I don't know.
Okay. Well, we will research the issue and...
You're going to have, you're going to have to do some homework. Now, maybe the building department has already done the homework. I don't know.
Okay.
But if it's not a private road, we don't, we don't, we don't want to act on a survey that's showing it a private road, because then we'd be granting you a much bigger variance.
Understood.
It might not have any impact, any real impact. I'm not saying you wouldn't be able to get the variance, but we have to know what we're granting, and...
Yeah, when I, when I took it to the building department, they seemed to think the answer was simple, but I'll double back with them, talk to the surveyor, and do some research in general about the nature of the road, or...
I mean, you're going to have to do some homework as to what, when, when the parcel, when the other property was created. There might be a subdivision approval or something that was said to shed some light on this. Obviously, there could be deeds or other recorded documents that do or do not, it might require some title work. So it's, it's not a simple question in terms of what is it, and one has to know the facts. And so, that's all I can tell you.
Okay, well, we'd like an opportunity to research the matter and submit on it.
So how does it settle for all purposes? Anyone out in the audience would like to be heard to this application? Can I have a motion to hold it open for all purposes?
You do.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I don't know what it is.
This is mixed applications?
I think so.
Probably the middle lane?
I think it is.
Who knows? On the application of case number 2782, 12...
The applicant is a limited liability company known as 1280 Metal Lane LLC. Subject property is located on the north side of Metal Lane, Beach Road, Doon Road, approximately 400 feet west of Road C. We have an approximately five acre parcel, 218,240 square feet, we're in the R80 zoning district, we're also in the Title Wetland and Title Wetlands overlay district. The property, this property is also under the same ownership as the property immediately to the south of Metal Lane. Property was formerly owned by the Kula Kunda's family. And we're here tonight to review an application to restore what was known affectionately by the community as the boathouse, a structure that existed, at least according to the records we found since prior to 1933. As you know, historically, many of the properties on the north side of Metal Lane were owned in the same ownership of those on the south side, and they used it for access to the bay, docks, boathouses and the like. And that's the way this arrangement has been for several years, and it's continuing now with my client's ownership. We're here tonight for two reasons. One is relief under the zoning code to permit the reconstruction of a non-conforming building used as the boathouse. If necessary, any variance is to permit the reconstruction and construction of a catwalk to provide access to the reconstructed boathouse, as well as wetland special permit for the catwalk, and if necessary, the reconstructed boathouse. This structure, and for the record, we're here tonight with Lisa Poyer from Inner Science, Rich Warren couldn't be with us as well, and also James Merrill, the architect for the landowner. And we have different presentations, I'll ask Lisa first to hand out to you is, I believe, a part of the record is an aerial photograph that goes back, a recent Google Earth photograph that showed the structure just prior to Superstorm Sandy last fall. And some pictures of what the structure looks like after Superstorm Sandy. Basically, the structure collapsed. My clients purchased the property, both properties here in June of 2011. One of their, their goals was to immediately enhance the structural integrity of this structure. We met with engineers and architects, as well as the building department, to see how we could do that. Unfortunately, Superstorm Sandy came along and did a number on the, on the site. Structure, though, that was there, did we get one? Sorry. Structure that was there, as I mentioned, was there at least from 1933. We submitted a substantial package of information, and tonight, we are here to familiarize yourself, this board, with the application, and our hope is, by the next meeting, we'll have input from your consultant about the wetland permits and the issues that might arise with that As I mentioned, the boathouse survived for well over 80 years and couldn't withstand the storm, but we're here to basically restruct the boathouse in kind. In the past, the structure actually had a, was used both as a boathouse and a chauffeur's apartment. You may have seen in the past how the floor structure fell out and the bathtub and so on, the bathroom facilities fell out, and actually, you will see the septic system actually exposed in the beach area. What we're proposing here is just to reconstruct the boathouse. There will be no residential component at all to this, at all, it's just to reconstruct the boathouse for access, my clients, for use of their boats. I'm not going to get into the design, I'll let Mr. Merrill actually take you through the design, and then if you have particular questions regarding the wetland aspects, Lisa may be able to help you there. I do want to ask if the board at least acknowledged that we're aware of one letter to the record, actually from the mayor, who has indicated that this is one of the areas that was hoped to, after the storm, help restore and reconstruct, and I believe the letter that is addressed to you is in support of our application as it's submitted.
Yes, we have.
Okay. So I'd like to introduce Jim Merrill.
Any copies of that, because I didn't get one.
You didn't get one?
I can provide you with a copy. I'd ask Mr. Merrill to come up, and basically, he can walk you through, and we have, will you, I'll hand down.
These documents that we're submitting right now are actually in the record, because we provided these, it's just an additional copy of these color photographs.
Hi, James Merrill, architect for the applicant. So I was, I think, I felt honored to be invited to do this. We've done, done some historical restoration work that's been noted, and one of the reasons that we do that, that we're interested in that, is I think that there's certain buildings in the community that have, that aren't just structures in the zoning sense of the word that have, have a kind of iconic value, and I think we saw this, the number of calls, the interest, the, the images, you know, and people who would say, you know, just people from all over the area who noted the loss of this building. In part, so it has a community value, I think, in the terms that I think of architecture playing a role in the community. Part of, I think, what people liked about the building too was in being historical and sort of harkening back to a day of, of open, simple structures, you know, boathouses, not everything being turned into the largest possible, you know, structure that you could, you could have. And I think that's why this picture is, you know, it, anyway, it kind of speaks to this, to the soul. And what we wanted to do with the, at the client's request, was to turn it back into what it was, nothing more. And so, we're talking about a new structure which attempts in every way to capture the simplicity and the feel of the old structure. It is, we can, I think, show the second image.
So this picture here is what was the building prior to Superstorm Sandy. And so that's the picture on my right, your left, and the picture here is proposed architectural rendering of what we intend to reconstruct.
The, the picture that you see of the proposed building is actually not photographic trick. It's, we, we went through the dimensions and we create, we have a 3D CAD model of the, that this is, results in this, in this photograph. And so, we've really actually drawn the structure to get it as exact to this picture as we can. Literally, the dimensions are same, we have pieces of the old board siding, we dimensioned off the vertical dimensions by, you know, analyzing photographs and measuring off of existing pieces of the building that we, that we pulled out of the water. So this is, you know, as close as we could possibly make it to the, the old building in terms of its height, dimension, width, location of windows, things like that. It's meant to be an open building, it is a boathouse, the air should be going through it, you should be able to see through it. It will have, the idea is it will have canoes and, you know, just sort of boats in it. If you look actually in the plans, you'll see that while the original building was meant for a deep draft type of boat to be able to pull into the center, what we're proposing in the, in the middle of this one is a floating dock that, that off which you can push kayaks and canoes and small craft. The, it's no longer, I don't think, possible to easily get any kind of deep draft, and I mean even much of a outboard in there, especially at low tide. But, so anyway, that's the, that's the use of it, that's been our attempt, and that's the spirit with which we've, we've taken this. I think Lisa may talk about the, the lack of electrical, the scope of electrical things, and water that we're proposing is really very minimal, just for the use of washing down, washing salt off of boat hulls and having some electrical lighting in there for safety. But otherwise, it's a very simple structure. Should I talk about the, we also are very aware that the, that we're proposing to do something in a sensitive environmental area, and so we're, we do not want to propose to do it in a conventional way. And so, we have a, a construction methodology that we've come up with, that we'd like to submit, to show you our thoughts on that. Basically, we'd like to build this from the water. We don't, we want to have as little land to access and land disturbance as possible during the construction. So this is a list of the, our construction approach. I'll just go quickly down, and piles would be, where needed in terms of new piles would be constructed from a barge and not from land.
Sorry, do you have a copy of the...
Is there next?
Methodology for...
Yeah, we have several, yeah. Ask them that.
There's one more downstairs.
Sure. I didn't see him sneak in here.
You know, I talked with the guys from Rambo, they've, they've looked it over, they have...
At high tide, it's two feet.
They have, he feels he can do it. I mean, we can, we can bring him in the next meeting and get into, into that in depth, but he feels pretty sure that he can do that. He also has light pontoon-like structures that he could attach to the building for people to walk in, that would really float, that don't have the depth of a barge, you know, really pontoon-like scaffolding, if you will, that...
Who has this?
Rambo.
Okay. I do, I do have, while we're talking about methodology, there's an existing wrecked boathouse and pier's pilings there now. Are you proposing like to take all the old pilings out, all the old debris by barge? How are you pulling those pilings out?
Yeah.
If you're not going to use them, or are they just going to cut them off? What's the plan for, you know, preparing the site?
We would reuse, I mean, we're, we basically designed this to sit on, and we have the, the survey shows the existing piles. So where they're deemed to be reusable, we would use any existing piles that are, that makes sense to use. That would take, I think it would probably take Rambo a examination, a closer examination of each pile by pile. Right now, it's a little hard to access them, some of them, not all of them.
They're good questions, I think what we'll do is have Rambo actually provide documentation to that.
So he would, of the, not only the building of it, but the preparation of the site, getting rid of the old building parts out of there, pilings, and...
Yeah.
If they're going to barge them in, barge them out, or, okay.
Yeah, and usually the piles are, you know, they have a, a backhoe or, you know, a crane on these barges for driving piles, and they can pull things out of the water easily too. So we're also planning to construct the boathouse in components and do that off-site, and then bring those in, and, and that, that leaves us the, a rapid assembly type of scenario where these things have been pre-assembled, prefabricated, pre-assembled, disassembled, brought in on a barge, and then rapidly installed. So I think that the big construction period that often you see in any kind of construction of layers of guys coming and doing different layers on, you know, needing to get around a structure and, and have staging areas nearby, all of that, I think, can be done from the water side.
The interior, I mean, you're just going to do a frame structure, so there's like no insulation, no sheet rock, no, you know, the messy stuff of construction.
Right.
I do have a question, because you said you're going to bring electricity and water to this site. Are you going to trench that in or pipe that in from the house across the street? Or how is that getting there?
We've discussed mistling that to the foot of the walkway, and then bringing it up and taking it on the walkway. So if we can do a mistle, we don't have to trench.
And it doesn't disturb the, the wetland?
Right. There is a driveway there. Let me go through this quickly. Access, we're proposing to do silt fencing along either side of the driveway that is existing there, that they used to, because this was actually the chauffeur's house, and it was, used to be, basically this, it's like, I think it's a gravel or shell type of a, of a, of a drive. And we would do, all the parking would be across the street on the main property, so there wouldn't be any parking on, on this property, even up at the street. And then, we're suggesting we would need, it would be, the workmen who would have, who would have to come from land would walk, and if we had a pickup truck or a small, some sort of small vehicle for transporting tools, things like that, to get directly there, that would be the most that we would want to use, so pretty much...
You have to improve that, the gravel road or this, a little bit, or is it okay as it is now?
I think it's okay, it's been a driveway for a long time.
It would need to be improved just a tiny bit, there's a couple of loaves...
A couple of potholes.
That just need to be filled in with probably some more gravel.
So it wasn't that long ago that it was a chauffeur's residence, so it was really supporting a lot of traffic.
When you say that, long ago.
Well, Kula Kunda's, right? Sorry.
1930.
Construction materials, non-treated materials in piles and, and structure, so we want to be environmentally aware from that point of view. And we're, we would be pulling out any of those exposed old structures, the debris and the septic system, whatever's left over, would we be pulling out and restoring that area to. Any areas that we, any, we, we hope we've designed this to really eliminate as much damage as possible on the land side, but we certainly restore anything that...
And you're doing an exact same footprint as the original building, correct?
Yep. You've got this, they're all surveyed, every pile, so we know where each pile is.
Prior to Hurricane Sandy, the homeowner had expressed interest, and we had had pre-meetings with Jim Merrill and Wayne Bruin to reconstruct the building in place in kind. So those ideas and that process had already been started, Hurricane Sandy came along, and everything kind of shifted to, you know, a newer, bigger building. There's preliminary discussions with...
It's not bigger.
Well, bigger, I'm sorry, newer, new building. Preliminary discussions with John Foster about supporting that original existing building, and how it could be framed up a little bit better, just to make it more functional and make it safer.
Yeah, that was going to be one of my questions, I mean, you know why this building failed, and then what are you doing to make the new building for the next storm?
Yeah, from the photographs of the old building, it's very clear why it failed. The interior photos of the framing, it was really, I'm surprised it was there as long as it was, in a way. Our plan is...
There were a lot of storms over a lot of years.
Yeah, well, it's amazing what holds up, right? But our, our plan, I think, is not to frame it that way. We're, we're, we would want to make this a partially enclosed, meet the partially enclosed engineering. So what, what looks exactly like it from the outside, I think, when you look inside at the framing, is going to probably have a, you know, we're, we're thinking of, of a beam structure, you know, maybe mahogany or some sort of, just more, less of a, of a frame structure and more larger beams. So...
That's it, Jim?
That's it for me.
And it will never be enclosed? If enclosed, it would have to meet any FEMA standards, or...
Well, it can't be enclosed, I mean, it's a, it's a boathouse, so... That's it for me?
And it will never be enclosed? If enclosed, it would have to meet any FEMA standards, or?
Well, it can't be enclosed. I mean, it's a, it's a boathouse, so the way this is, is it's up on piles, this high out of the ground, and it's open below. And so, and the whole end of it facing out is basically open. So you, it can't be weatherproof in any way because of the tidal change. So your, any doors or, you know, anything you have would, has to deal with the tidal change. So it's, there really is no way to make it an enclosed structure. It's certainly not in the plan, but I think it would be impossible.
I didn't even know it was gone. Haven't been down there in a while.
What about the lighting? I imagine some care should be taken to, you know, not hang the lights in the windows or something. They could be a little muted as far as the rest of the world's concerned.
Yeah. No, I think that's our goal. It's not meant to be, I think, actually, we're going to, we can get more specific, I guess, if, and answer that sets on limits, if you like.
I think the intent is only if there's someone was there and it was after dark or something, that there's a place a light can come on just for safety purposes. It's not something that's going to be on for security on 24 hours a day.
Safety, I think, would be our main concern.
So you wouldn't do anything for security, because some 35-year-olds told me that's where they learned to smoke dope and stuff like that.
You know, I'm sure that's exactly right.
Thirty-five?
Well, I don't know how old, I'm not sure how old they were.
We, we've shown in our rendering, actually, on the, to the right, we show some shutters over the windows there. I think we want to make that where the entry meets that. That'd be the point where you, most kids most would kind of get in. We want to actually have a secure, have a lockable space. And I think their insurance company is going to have some, have some ideas about, you know, what, put some limits on it for us, too, from a safety point of view. There are, this building, at one point, there are photographs, photographs of it with shutters. We like the open look and so forth, but some kind of just, to prevent vandalism and so forth.
Does it always have an asphalt roof, or is that recent?
The building down there now, and I've walked on it, is like many layers of asphalt. So I think it has had an asphalt roof for a long time. There may be some shingles under it. I don't think so.
One, two, two layers.
Yeah, and these are boards underneath, so I think it may have.
And the new is asphalt, too?
No. No, we would put a shingle roof on it.
Okay, good.
Yeah, no. Is that, is that okay?
The sea does like it further, probably.
Doesn't get as hot.
Yeah.
So we're here, introduction. We understand that we're going to need some input from your consultant, and if there's any questions particularly we need to address, I hope the board will be able to get us over with it. We did submit a lot of information for you to digest, but in a way, it's somewhat of a simple adaptation. It's reconstructed in kind of a place, and we're trying to minimize any impact on the environment. I think it also needs, as Jim mentioned, some community architecture or other significance.
Personally, I'm glad to see that they'd want to reconstruct it as a boathouse as it was. Just like you said, you know, historically, from a kid, I remember the boathouse there. So it's, our biggest concern now is that, you know, how you build it and how, you know, the effects it'll have on a while it's being constructed, getting rid of the old, you know, keeping the wetlands safe now and then after it's completed, so.
How long would it take to build it?
Well, I don't know, it depends a little bit. I think the longest part of it would be upgrading or replacing any piles and sort of getting the, getting the debris out of there. If it's a matter of assembling something that's already been constructed elsewhere, I think you need a few good days, you know.
Be kind of something to have a barge there for a year.
Yeah, no, and I think we can, we can narrow that down, certainly. Our intention is that if it's pre-constructed elsewhere and all the fabrication is done there, and you've eliminated all of the work and the mess that goes with that, then you're really bringing in, and you're, you know, some of these modular-type structures, they go up pretty quickly, so. You wouldn't want to have a barge, actually, you wouldn't want to have a barge hanging out there for a long time.
Where do you think, did the chauffeur drive the car down there and leave it out there? And then he'd have to wash it every day, maybe?
I don't really live there, so.
If you got a high tide, he might lose the car.
All right.
Do you have anything else? Rick?
Just one comment, which will start with a question. Did any of you attend the art show in Agawam Park this weekend?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, that's just a lead in. My wife and I went to the art show, and by coincidence, one of the artists had, you know, framed, I don't know what the correct terminology is, framed photographs of the boathouse.
Sure.
And they were absolutely gorgeous, and we bought one.
Really?
Is that legal opinion, or? So am I still allowed to participate in this?
Well, the value of your picture's going to go down now that we did that.
If we don't rebuild it, no one will know what that's a picture of.
No, but it's scarce.
You have to recuse yourself now.
Jim, have any questions, man?
Yeah, just a couple of things, and I think, in keeping with Wayne's request, if you can get any questions out there early, they can be responded to, it'll be helpful. You know, overall, it's been a structure that's been there historically. I'm very familiar with it back through the 70s, and obviously, it's been there much longer than that. When it was constructed, it did cover bay bottom areas, so there has been kind of an impact over the years, but the existing deteriorated condition is not benefiting the bay, and certainly replacement of it, you know, I think that the cultural aspects of it would certainly outweigh the environmental aspects. So my questions have more to do with detail, and I think you submitted some plans just tonight, because all I saw on the file that was submitted was like a four-plan layout, but it looks like you have some elevations now.
Do you have that package?
Yeah, the one that was distributed tonight, yes. So the first question just has to do with the survey itself, and I am curious about the depths, just in terms of access. And when I looked at the notes on how the soundings were taken, you know, it just says high water, low water soundings on the squiresholden survey. And there are numbers that indicate depths, but I don't know what they're in relation Because I think that kind of plays into, can a barge get access? Is it going to be sitting on the bottom at low tide? I'm kind of curious about the upland staging area, even though I don't think it's really this board's concern, but more curious than anything, where are you going to actually bring those parts and launch barges and bring panels and so forth out to access the site? And then certainly from this board's standpoint and my concern, I'd like some more detail on the catwalk construction methodology, because that's going to actually go through the vegetated wetlands. I didn't see any information on the elevation of the catwalk or cross-section or anything that shows its elevation above the vegetated wetlands, and I think that'd be very important, as well as some indication. I didn't read the whole narrative yet, but did you propose open great decking for the catwalk?
Oh, no.
I don't know if it's proposed now, but I believe it should be. It seems to me as though there was a bulkhead structure within the pile, that's, the piles that supported the original structure. I assume that'll be rebuilt as well, and I see some indication of that in the elevations that you submitted tonight, but I didn't see anything about piles or spacing or construction type or anything like that. And I imagine you'd need that for some of the other permits as well. So I think that would be important to know. Is there any dredgings proposed at all? So there's no removal of sediment, but I imagine you'll be jetting in piles and jetting in sheathing and building it in probably a Navy-style bulkhead. So just what impacts to the, you know, to the bottom sediments in that area can we anticipate, if any? It sort of came up in your discussion before, but is there a FEMA requirement for the elevation of the structure? I would assume we're.
Not for boathouse.
Not for boathouse.
It's accessory structure?
Yeah, sort of like a garage, right?
Yeah. But I would think the intent is to obviously try and elevate it above storm surges or access to it. In some way that you're not going to, well, of course, but in some way that you're not going to have it.
We can check that. I think it is. I mean, the land behind it is like AE9 across the street, so he was out of the water. We can check that.
But I would think you'd at least want to indicate the elevation of the floor and maybe the bottom of the joists, just so it's known what elevation it'll be. And then I was just curious from Lisa, if you have some status report from the other agencies, where you are with other permits.
We have submitted to the New York State DEC, and we don't have any response back yet from them, but as soon as we get something.
And it does require Army Corps?
Army Corps as well, as county trustees.
County trustees.
Okay.
We haven't seen it.
Yes, I thought I saw that in the, okay. Those are the only questions I had at this point. I don't think I'll have many more unless, you know, some of these generate others. Overall, the concept seems, you know, seems good. Just more in the details.
I just make one request, Jeff, is if you could maybe shoot us a quick memo with that on there, and if, you know, if you have any other thoughts, anything else to add, you know, second thoughts or otherwise, just add that to those, so that we.
Is that okay with the board? LLC, the office as well as members?
That would be great.
Sure.
Is there anyone out in the audience?
I'm looking that way.
We're going to hold this open for all purposes?
So moved.
Thank you.
All favor? And this meeting of the Southampton Village, Stony Brook, the Fields, July 25, 2013, is closed.